Welcome to a snowy March 5, 2015 Murfreesboro City Council meeting. Ms. Madeline Scales-Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. May we bow our heads, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you just to say thank you for giving us your darling Son who made the ultimate sacrifice that we may live. And thank you for blessing us to see this another day that we don't deserve. We thank you so much. Thank you for our veterans that are at home and those that are fighting on foreign shores tonight. And thank you for the employees that have braved the weather, that we may be comfortable. Blessed are homeless, those that are hungry, those that are in bereavement tonight, Lord. And thank you for blessing us to live in a city where we have great people and great amenities that we are so grateful for. And thank you for allowing the citizens of Murfreesboro to elect a council, which sometimes have our differences, but at the end of the meeting, we come together and support each other. And, Lord, last but not least, as we prepare to conduct the business of our city, we ask that you move in the midst and allow us to make decisions that you will be pleased with. This is my prayer that I ask in your darling Son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Scales-Harris. Mr. Lyons, I think before we get started, it would be nice for you to give us an update on the weather and how we've handled that and how our employees have done such a good job.
Yeah. Once again, our employees have done a phenomenal job dealing with the winter weather. The storm hit right as rush hour was beginning, and as Street Director Raymond Hillis said, the storm may have had us on the ropes, but we were going to keep on swinging. And that they did. They did an outstanding job. We had crews working overnight, all night, and it's been all the city departments, not just the street department. Solid waste drivers were pitching in. Police and fire, as always, are out helping the community, but we've got employees on the clock every day at our water plant, our wastewater plant, and all the city departments really did a great job. So, did a good job with the streets, and we continue to appreciate their hard work and dedication.
Great. Thank you. All right, we'll move into our consent agenda. Any questions or items that you have questions about?
If there's no questions or comments, I move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Crumley, she'll -- sorry, Mr. Crumley. She'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Oh, yes.
Don't be shocked.
I thought you were going to defend that comment.
Councilman LaLance. Councilman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll move now into -- you have the February 26, 2015 regular meeting minutes in front of you. Do you have any additions or deletions?
Move for approval of the February 26 meeting.
Second.
Motion and second. She'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilman LaLance.
Aye.
Councilman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Move into third readings. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15OZ02, rezoning an area along North Tennessee Boulevard to residential multifamily 12, RM 12 district.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion and second. She'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilman LaLance.
Aye.
Councilman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15O803 to annex an area along Bradyville Pike and adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage.
Second. A motion and second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman LaLance.
Aye.
Councilman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15OZ04 to zone an area along Bradyville Pike to single-family residential 10, RS 10 district simultaneous with annexation.
Move for passage on third read.
Second. She'll call the roll, Mr. Crumley.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilman LaLance.
Aye.
Councilman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15OZ05 to amend a planned unit development, PUD district located west of Rucker Lane.
Move for passage.
Second. A motion and second. Mr. Crumley, she'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilman LaLance.
Aye.
Councilman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll move into second readings and consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15O11, amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning, Section 7 and Section 18 pertaining to city solid waste collection services to multifamily developments.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. A motion and second. Mr. Crumley, she'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilman LaLance.
Aye.
Councilman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll move into first readings and consider letter of recommendations from the city attorney and Water and Sewer Board with regards to ordinances implementing changes to special sanitary sewer assessment districts.
Mayor, members of the council, brought before you recommendations from the Water and Sewer Board, which engaged in a study of the city's practice of having special sanitary sewer assessment districts to recoup costs of extending sewer to areas which do not have it, undeveloped, in order to facilitate development. We have done that for a number of years, and we had a number of different structures with which to do it. It's the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Board that we standardize this, and that requires making some changes. And it also, the standardization reflects a change in policy, if you will. And as I tried to outline in my letter describing what they had done, we have some, three ordinances who had been established with a definite calendar term, which now need to be repealed because that timeframe has passed. In the second category, we have assessment districts that had a specific time limit of either 15 or 25 years, which, because of the recession and its impact on development, if the original timeframes were kept on some of them, it seemed unlikely that the cost of extending sewer would be recouped within the timeframe that was set out in the ordinance. Yet, those properties would indeed benefit from the sewer, and the department, ratepayers would have been out the expense. So, the proposed ordinances seek to eliminate those termination periods of 15 or 25 years and replace that by a standard of ending the fee once the Water and Sewer Department's expenses have been recouped, which may be within the original time period or without. But the idea is that the repayment obligation will end when the money has been repaid. That is also the principle that is in the third category. We had, most recently, the more modern, with one exception, assessment districts had been indefinite and had called for an unlimited term, and all properties within a district were going to be required to pay for it because all properties within the district benefited. But in order to be consistent, the recommendation from the Water and Sewer Board is that as soon as the water and sewer expense has been recouped, that the obligation to pay would end. At that time, for the second or third category, you know, staff would come back with an ordinance, repealing the ordinance, but the idea is that we would stop charging as soon as we'd been made whole. And you can see, if you turn to the attachment to that letter, a chart that Mr. Gore has prepared with data more recent than the Water and Sewer Board had, data current to January, showing what the starting date of the assessment district was, how much the department paid, the basis per unit that was used for the repayment ordinance, and the amount that had been repaid as of January, and showing the percentages that have been repaid. You can see, when you look particularly at the 25-year assessment ordinances, particularly overall Creek, you know, that we're talking about millions of dollars that we need to be sure we get back, or the cost will be borne by the ratepayers generally, rather than by the owners of the property who benefit from the sewer extension. So, that is the overall picture and the concept. It needs to be, should the council decide to accept the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Board, it needs to be implemented through a series of individual ordinances, which are specific to the assessment district. My suggestion to you would be that you discuss the concepts now before voting on specific ordinances, because I think that would facilitate it. Obviously, Mr. Gore is the subject matter expert, and he is here. I won't say I'll threaten you, but I will just mention he has a PowerPoint presentation if you want some more detail about this. So, he and I would be happy to answer your questions about the concepts or any specific assessment district and the repayment status.
Does anyone have any questions?
Phil, three.
Me, too. It's a hostile environment.
You know, you can't ask him anything without getting a PowerPoint. Ms. McGinnon, do you need me to read each one, and then we vote on those separately?
I do.
Okay.
You know, I do need that, and I would think, and this is something you have not heard from me as a council before, but I think it is possible to do, and I say that not out of any doubt of Mr. Crumley's ability to call the names, but should, based on initial discussion, it appear that there is unanimity about this, I think we could take an all-in-favor yes or no, and if there is a no, then do a roll call vote.
Let me think about that.
Okay, so how would the council, do you see anything that gives you concern, since all of these are basically the same?
Ben's, they're all basically the same. Unless somebody is opposed to pulling one of them out, couldn't we just go ahead and have one vote on items, approving items A through K?
That would not be best legal practice, Mr. Smotherman. I was trying to make it as simple as possible, but it is the council's decision, not mine.
I think what would be good, I'll read through each one, and then if the council is okay, whoever makes the motion, if you would do that by acclamation, and then that way, we would not have to read through each person after vote?
I think procedurally, acclamation is different. If you can just say all in favor, yes or no, and if we have a no, then we'll do a roll call.
Okay, all right. We'll consider letter of recommendations from the city attorney and Water and Sewer Board with regards to ordinances implementing changes to special sanitary sewer assessment districts. Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O12, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33201, 33202, 33204, regarding Thompson Lane Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District, John Bragg Highway Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District, and overall Creek Drainage Basin C Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second. Can we have a roll call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O13, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33203, regarding the overall Creek Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O14, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33205, regarding the Salem Highway and Barfield Road Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O15, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33206, regarding the Buchanan and Elam Road interchanges, Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O16, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33208, regarding the Osborne Lane Sanitary Sewer District.
Move for passage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O17, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33213, regarding the Three Rivers Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O18, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33200, regarding the Compton Road Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O19, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33209, regarding the Medical Parkway Special, excuse me, the Medical Center Parkway Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O20, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33210, regarding the Rockvale Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O21, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33211, regarding the Salem Highway and Barfield Road Drainage Basin D Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O22, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewer, Section 33212, regarding the Pitts Lane Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, well, now move into new business. We'll conduct a public hearing and consider for approval a certificate of compliance for Arshish S Patel, Serka Shamar G Patel, Prakash P Patel at Borough Liquors 3210 Memorial Boulevard. Before I open the public hearing, we'll go over our public hearing rules, that we'll ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address. We ask you to speak no more than three minutes unless you are the spokesperson of a group. Please address all comments to the city council, and at the end of the hearing, we'll attempt to address all the comments and questions. Each person will be allowed to speak only once. And we'll now open the public hearing for this certificate of compliance. All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for approval of this certificate of compliance.
Move for passage.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Crumley, she'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilman LaLance.
Aye.
Councilman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll conduct a public hearing and consider for approval of certificate of compliance for Prashish N Patel, Dipika Mar Patel, Kanari G Patel, and Bina Patel at Liquor Planet 3508 Shelbyville Pike. We'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for approval of this certificate of compliance.
I'll move for passage.
Second. A motion and a second. Mr. Crumley, she'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilman LaLance.
Aye.
Councilman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll consider for renewal of a certificate of compliance for George Hannah at Stop &amp; Shop Discount Liquor and Wine, 490 St. Andrews Drive, Suite 102. Mr. Crumley?
Public hearing, here.
No, there's no public hearing on this one.
No public hearing on renewal, I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion?
Move for passage.
Second. All right, motion and second. Mr. Crumley, she'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilman LaLance.
Aye.
Councilman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Item 12 has been removed from the agenda. Item 13 pursuant to Resolution 15OZR01 adopted by the city council on January 15, 2015, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 1.91 acres from single-family residential 10, RS 10 district, to highway commercial CH district, and approximately 1.57 acres from single-family residential 10, RS 10 district, to commercial fringe CF district along Bradyville Pike at South Rutherford Boulevard. Mr. David Waldron, applicant 2014-402, and notice of the said public hearing was published in the February 16, 2015 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley?
Yeah, to Mayor McFarland. Excuse me. Get this pulled up. There we go. Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of city council. Our lone zoning public hearing tonight has to do with property that is located at the intersection of Bradyville Pike and South Rutherford Boulevard. It's a total of 3.48 acres, currently zoned RS 10, single-family residential 10. It has been zoned this way ever since the adoption of our current zoning ordinance in 1984. Prior to that time, it was zoned R2, another residential classification. It is a part of the tract that was developed by the Waldron family as the Wilson Estates subdivision. A part of this tract was annexed in 1967, and a part of the tract was annexed in 1973. Section 1 of the Wilson Estates subdivision, which you can see on the map before you, or just to the east of the subject property along Willow Drive and Floyd Avenue and Arrow Court, was recorded in 1972. Wilson Estates is zoned RS 10 as well, and this corner parcel, as I mentioned, about three and a half acres in size, is kind of a remnant parcel from that Wilson Estates subdivision that has never been developed. It has basically remained there, undeveloped, for the past 40 years or so after the development of the Wilson Estates subdivision. Since that time, South Rutherford Boulevard has been constructed along its western boundary. Further to the south, the Crestview subdivision was constructed, which is also zoned RS 10. The Brendleton Crossing subdivision directly across the subject property, or directly across South Rutherford Boulevard from the subject property is zoned PUD and RM 12. And as you'll recall, there is a tract that we had for third and final reading earlier tonight that was zoned RS 10 and annexed across Bradyville Pike. The applicants originally made the request for this property to be rezoned from RS 10 to Commercial Highway. The planning commission held a public hearing about this matter on October 1, and there were about five or six neighbors who spoke at that meeting. They had a number of concerns. At the end of the planning commission public hearing, the planning commission voted to defer action on the request so that the applicant could hold a neighborhood meeting and attempt to work out some of those concerns with the adjoining neighbors. So, later on that month, in October, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting at Black Fox Elementary, was well-attended, and there was some good dialogue at that meeting. And when the applicant came back to the planning commission on December 17 and was brought up under old business, he had modified his request so that 1.91 acres of the request, the frontage along South Rutherford Boulevard, still remained in the Commercial Highway original request, but the 1.57 acres further to the southeast, which is shown in the orange color on the map in front of you, he modified his request, so that was now requested to be zoned to CF, Commercial Fringe. And as you know, the CF zoning is a more of a middle-of-the-road commercial zoning that is meant to be more of a transitional zoning when there are adjacent residential uses. The CF zoning removes a number of the objectionable uses that might be found in the Commercial Highway zone, such as auto sales, auto repair, contractor storage areas, landscape nurseries, some of the uses that might have outdoor components that might not be necessarily compatible with adjacent residential uses. So, the applicant modified his request in that way, and in addition, there was concerns about vehicular access onto Willow Drive. As you can see, the property does have frontage both on Floyd Avenue and Willow Drive. What the applicant proposes to do, and Mr. Murphy, who is representing Mr. Waldron, will go into greater detail on this, he proposes to deed access rights for the subject property to the city for Willow Drive, so that there will be no access onto Willow Drive once he deeds those access rights to the city. The city would then own those access rights and could restrict those access rights. At that December 17 meeting, when the planning commission considered this under old business, they did recommend that the modified request be approved, or they recommended approval of the modified request. And so, tonight, we, the city council needs to conduct a public hearing on this matter and consider the request as modified. Mr. Brick Murphy will have a PowerPoint presentation in just a moment that he would like to go over the request and the commitments that his clients are making, and I'll pull that up in just a moment. But before he begins, I'd be happy to answer any questions from a staff standpoint regarding this request.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
And hopefully, I'll be quicker pulling his up than I was pulling mine up.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of city council and staff. I'm Brick Murphy of the law firm of Murphy, Murphy, here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. David Waldron, whose family developed the Wilson Estates subdivision. Also here tonight is Mr. Steve Steele, who's worked hand-in-hand with my father and I and Mr. Waldron to engineer and design this in a way that'd be most beneficial for him for commercial use, but also least impactful for the neighbors. So, just a brief introduction to the property. The application, as Mr. Blomley said, is to rezone approximately 3.48 acres from RS 10 to Commercial Zone. This 3.48 acres will be divided into two tracts. 1.91 acres was requested for Commercial Highway, and that's what fronts on Rutherford Boulevard, and what's intended probably to be a gas station. It was under contract with Speedway, but they've terminated the contract in a nice way and said, "Come back and see us after you get your zoning if you do." So, we anticipate it probably is going to be a gas station with a convenience store. And then, talking to members of the planning commission and members of the community, we decided to amend the application for the bounce of the property that abuts Wilson Estates, and that's the 1.57 acres to Commercial Fringe for the exact reasons Mr. Blomley said, to exclude uses that might be less compatible with residential subdivision and be sensitive about that interface. This tract, as Mr. Blomley said, was a portion of the property remaining after Vester Waldron and his family developed Wilson Estates. The elder, Mr. Waldron, was quite a savvy businessman and anticipated this to be a commercial corner as the city developed. He was a man of vision and knew it was coming and reserved that piece of property for that purpose. So, that's kind of always the intention. The lot is currently vacant, and it abuts, as I said, Wilson. The lot is currently vacant, and it abuts, as I said, Wilson Estates. It's kind of a little irregularly shaped now that Rutherford has come in and got Bradyville and the subdivision streets that were there before. The track is bounded by Rutherford Boulevard, Bradyville Pike, Floyd Avenue, Willow Avenue, and then the subdivision in the back. The character of the property is it's a corner that's heavily traveled. Bradyville and Rutherford Boulevard are both fairly major streets, particularly Rutherford Boulevard, which is a major arterial, which makes it unsuitable for single-family development, frankly. The noise, the heavy traffic, light shining into your house, and other aesthetic considerations just don't make it appropriate anymore for single-family residential housing. And so -- but those things conversely make it very appropriate for commercial, which desires a traffic count and visibility, and the location on the corner makes it perfect for those sorts of uses, but not for residential. I know it's a little hard to see, and I've got a laser pointer. I try not to shine it in anybody's eyes, but this is an old plaque from the '70s, and I hope I'm getting this right, but this is -- I'm going to flip to my little page so I can make sure that I'm right. Give me one second. My IT department didn't make it in because of the snow today. That was a joke. This is Bradyville Pike right here. We have the proposed Rutherford Boulevard at the time, which takes a little jog there. It's configured a little bit differently now, but that was how it was anticipated at the time, and as you can see, it looked like a very suitable place to have commercial development out there on what was going to be Rutherford Boulevard. Then you have Floyd Avenue, which is right here, and then you have Willow Drive, which is essentially now the subdivision street that we want to be most sensitive to. It was not designed to be a commercial access, and I can understand the neighbors' concerns about its use for this purposes. I'm going to be very -- try to keep my track straight here with the 1.91, so bear with me a little bit. Originally, the application was made for both tracks, both the 1.91 acres under contract with Speedway at the time for a convenience store and gas station, as well as the additional property that backs up to Wilson Estates to be Commercial Highway. Since that time, as I said, that Speedway has terminated their contract, but on very cordial terms, and Mr. Waldron intends to sell the corner on Rutherford, that 1.91 acres of it's zoned, to Speedway or for similar use. Site plan has already been prepared, and Mr. Ablot was planning director. The internal traffic and ingress and egresses were all worked out, so Mr. Waldron basically has a plan for a gas station, a convenience store, and if Speedway doesn't come back to the table, he's got that ready. The remaining property, which we proposed to have be Commercial Fringe, was, as I said, originally a request for Commercial Highway. We heard the concerns from the neighbors about that interface and asked to have a more -- a less impactful transitional zoning, Commercial Fringe, which will, as Mr. Baumley said, prohibit some of the uses that would be more objectionable to the neighbors and more intrusive. I think this is instructive. This shows the two pieces -- it's one piece of property now. It's not been subdivided, but it shows you that this is going to be what's proposed to be, the Commercial Highway with a proposed gas station and convenience store. There's no proposed use for the Commercial Fringe property yet, but they anticipate maybe a neighborhood grocery store or Dollar General-type use. I'm going to go skip ahead a little bit because this slide is helpful to orient you. Once again, this is South Rutherford Boulevard. This is Bradyville Pike. So this is a major corner here with a lot of traffic, both this way and this way. You have the Willow Drive right here, which is the subdivision street, and then you've got Floyd Avenue right here. And so this little piece right here and the balance of this lot, we propose to deed to the city the right of way. And that way, there won't be access to either of those lots for commercial vehicles on Willow Drive. The neighbors' -- and that was one of the major concerns, was truck traffic and the general public using their subdivision street, and we wanted a way to prevent that from happening. Obviously, it's a public street, but there's no reason for trucks to go back there if there's nowhere for them to go. Mr. Waldron agreed, and we worked with the city and agreed to the format of the deed, to deed that right of way. I get ahead of myself here. Okay. As a result of the deed to the city for the right of way for the two tracts, the 1.57 acres, which would have had frontage on both Willow Drive and Bradyville, would no longer have basically two front doors or dual frontage. It would only have frontage on Bradyville Pike, and that would trigger the city's ordinances as to rear setbacks and the treatment of Commercial Fringe in the rear when it abuts a residential neighborhood. And then once -- more. They've also agreed to put additional planting and buffering to provide additional screening. The intent there is the screening will reduce the visibility of the two commercial tracts from the single-family residential neighborhood. And that enhanced buffering, we think, would be -- provide a little bit of a street scape as well for Willow Drive. So this is what we're talking about right here, if you can see the green there. This is the Commercial Fringe property, which would be restricted at Willow and just have access off of Bradyville. And here's our Commercial Highway proposed property, which would not have access off of Willow either. And then we'd have additional plantings. Now, there's a fence that exists right here, a pretty sizable fence with a single-family home there, but we're going to beef that up and have additional plantings there. And Mr. Steve Steele's firm will work on what exact plantings at site plan would be appropriate with Mrs. Holloway. So after discussions with members of the community, after these things were agreed to at Planning Commission, we've had additional outreach. We're always asking how we make our project better, and as we go around and talk to people, it was brought up that maybe we should also add some restrictive covenants to the Commercial Fringe. So kind of a belt and suspenders approach, both a less intensive zoning classification as well as some private covenants that say, "We don't want particular things," even if somebody were to come and get it rezoned to a higher classification, those restrictions would still be on. I'm going to go through these briefly. These are some of the uses that we would prohibit on the Commercial Fringe proposed lot. Anything that has loudspeakers outside that are unreasonably loud, you know, sale, sale, Saturday, Saturday is not what neighbors want, and so that would be prohibited. Manufacturing facilities, to the extent they're not allowed anyway in this zoning classification, which they wouldn't be, but if for some way in the future it was zoned a different classification, they would be prohibited. Taxidermy studios, car dealerships, vehicle or boat rental facilities, car washes, family crisis and violence centers, particularly the car dealerships can either be very nice or some of them can be a bit of an eyesore if not maintained very well. We felt like that was a use that we just needed to remove. Automobile dismantlers and recyclers, just not appropriate next to single-family residential. And then gas stations. Now, this is obviously just the Commercial Fringe property that backs up to Wilson Estates. The intent for the property on Rutherford Boulevard, once again, is a gas station. But I wanted to point out again that that commitment is just for the Commercial Fringe lot. And then fraternity and sorority houses. I was once in a fraternity. I wouldn't want to live next to my fraternity house, for sure. Facilities related to occult sciences, such as palm readers, astrologers, fortune tellers, tea leaf readers, and prophets. This is something that we didn't feel was appropriate. I think these sort of things are fun personally, but I'm not sure I'd want to live next to a fortune teller. But, you know, who knows? Pet funeral homes and tattoo parlors, also, we felt were inappropriate uses so close to someone's home. I'd like to thank you for your time, for being here tonight. This has been a long process that began with my father about two years ago, working on this with Mr. Waldron, and thank you so much for braving the elements and being here tonight, having the meeting. We respectfully ask for you to vote in favor of the application. Once again, Mr. Waldron is here tonight. If you've got questions of the applicant, and also Steve Steele with Hudson Steel Engineering is present as well, and I'll be here to answer any questions you may have, should you have any.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one question. Mr. Murfree, is there a red light at the corner of Rutherford and Bradyville, a traffic signal?
Mr. Steele is shaking his head yes, so when it comes to traffic, I'm always going to ask him. But I would -- there is one.
I thought there was, but I didn't want to.
There is. But I wanted confirmation from my expert over here, just a second. And that'll help with traffic flows and things, and it makes it much more suitable for commercial development there.
Mr. Murfree, would Commercial Fringe, would that permit a financial institution on that property?
That's a great question. I think it probably would. It's a pretty long list in all zoning ordinance, and I can't say, even though I've tried, I've committed everything to memory, and I think it probably would allow -- let the expert answer.
I'm always glad I bring this with me. You never know when it's going to come in handy. We would classify that as a financial service, and yes, or Councilman Smotherman, that would be a permitted use in the Commercial Fringe zone.
Okay. I've got a little concern with that. Could we request, because of the considerable number of quick cash or financial institutions that are 24 hours, that I think are just as intrusive on the neighborhood as a commercial property, would you consider adding that to your list of things that would be in your restricted covenants?
Absolutely. That's perfectly acceptable. Our problem was with the code defining what's quick cash and what's a bank branch, but increasingly, banks are going away from branches, so absolutely, I can define it very easily in restricted covenant. We'll be happy to do that. And we would propose recording those between the second and third reading, and that way you could hold my feet to the fires to the commitments tonight. And if the city staff wants to review my definition of a check-in-a-cash or quick cash sort of place, then I'll do my best to define it and look at Tennessee Code to do that as well. But I want to make sure we don't keep out the kinds of uses we want and do keep out the ones we don't want, so I'll be very careful about that.
Right. Just the 24-hour nature, I think, kind of defeats the whole purpose of doing Commercial Fringe on this piece of property.
I completely agree, Mr. Smotherman. Cashing -- quick cash sort of places in general, I think they'd be willing to.
And I compliment you, Brick, on your ability to, from the first Planning Commission meeting, to improve this to the point that we really have relatively no one here tonight who appears to be in major opposition of it as far as the audience is concerned. I know in our first Planning Commission meeting, it was kind of a difficult meeting for the public to swallow, and I think tonight reflects what the success that you had with your neighborhood meeting and the changes that you've made, so I compliment you on that.
Well, as with this project, Mr. Smotherman, I appreciate that. We're always trying to get the neighbors' input, and to the extent we can do something to make it more palatable to them in the application we make, I would encourage people to contact my firm if I'm involved, and we reach out proactively to people, because there are a lot of things that the applicant doesn't think of that a neighbor might, and it certainly helps to make a better project, and I appreciate that, and we work hard to do that, and I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murfree. We'll now open the public hearing, and those wishing to speak for or against this proposal, please come to the podium. Anyone? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on First Reading Ordinance 15OZ01 to rezone an area along Bradyville Pike at South Rutherford Boulevard to Highway Commercial CH District and Commercial Fringe CF District.
Move for passage, John, First Reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Mr. Crumlich, we'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Lance.
Aye.
Councilman Shackleton.
Aye.
Councilman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now hear from the city engineer with regards to departmental reports of project and activities and hopefully no change orders. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and members of the City Council. If I can pull this up here real quick. It's got a little presentation about what the engineering department is doing. We'll try to keep this under an hour.
Close the public hearing.
I do thank you for the opportunity to present this information tonight. It's my pleasure to work along with some of the finest employees in the city of Murfreesboro, consisting primarily of two different divisions. We have the Street Division and the Engineering Division, which totals more than 40 employees. This was taken from Mr. Raymond Hillis's vehicle at this morning, around 7:00 a.m., and as Mr. Lance alluded to, the Street Division was out in force really for the last 24 hours. We've had folks on call and actually at the department or at the building, and really began in earnest around 1:30 a.m. last night, as far as salting the roads, trying to get ahead of the ice and sleet that was the first to hit. I hope that we'll focus primarily on the Engineering Division tonight. I hope that you give Mr. Hillis the opportunity to come back at a later date and just be able to talk to you about the phenomenal work that he's doing there with the division. As far as the Engineering Division, we have seven inspectors, four engineers, administrative support specialists, and two coordinators that complete the work that we'll be speaking about tonight. The Engineering Division is -- consists primarily of -- The engineering division is, consists primarily of, really has about five different services, which is the, we can categorize the, the work that we do into. The first, development services, capital improvement projects, resident requests for services, stormwater, the stormwater program, and then also special projects. The development services, as the city council well knows, development is, is back in, in force, and we're excited to, to take part in that. Subdivision plans, we've approved, we've reviewed approximately 30 sections of subdivision plans over the last six months. Site plans, we've reviewed approximately 100 site plans over the last six months. So we, as you can tell, we're getting back to pre-recession type, type figures, and we're, as I mentioned, we're excited to help. Capital improvement projects, a big, really a big thing that we do, managing those from, from the initial concept through the engineering phase, and then all the way into construction and completion. We currently have two major projects that's underway, the Joe B. Jackson Parkway, I-24 to Chirp Street. We're nearing completion on it. As, as many have, have mentioned, we are, are the contractor is correcting a, a problem with the bridge deck that's taking a little bit of time, but that project should be open for, for motorist use later this, this spring. Veterans Parkway is on schedule to be completed by the, the end of the year, Barfield Road to St. Andrews Drive, and that will essentially complete what was originally known as the Southwest Loop, and is, is now been renamed to Veterans Parkway. The Mill Tennessee Boulevard project, the Greenland Drive to Main Street in front of the campus there, we're anxious to, to begin that, should be able to begin that later this summer. The, the state has, is really finishing up their review, TDOT, and, and that should, should come to pass quickly. Lottle Street improvements, the relocation there and, and the traffic circle should begin construction later, late this spring or early summer. Another thing that we, we, we help out with is the resident request for services. We've reviewed about 300 permit applications for single-family residents in the last six months. We review on average 300 fence permits annually, and we respond to about 150 drainage requests annually as, as, as well. The stormwater program, one of our major point of emphasis over the last, last couple of years is actually going in and completing basin studies. A lot of that is in areas that have not fully developed yet, and being able to set aside some, some land for stormwater quality as well as quantity, and just going in and looking at kind of the master plan of, of what that basin would look like in order to, to meet the public's needs. We've completed the Lee Springs Branch watershed study, Spence Creek, Bear Branch watershed didn't make the list here. And then we're also working on the, the Town Creek conveyance and looking at some, some neat things that we'll bring back to you at a, at a later date also with it. Stormwater maintenance program, we've, we're either working or, or completing engineering plans for some projects, upcoming projects in the Mitchell Nielsen area, the Huntwood Leaf Avenue area, Southern Meadows, Kimbrough Woods, out at, off of Santa and Bruce Drive, and then also the Hardwood Drive project. And then finally, our, really one of the, the treats of working with the, with the engineering division is the wide range of projects. And so everything else that didn't fit into one of the, one of the categories I mentioned previously, we, we kind of throw into the special projects. And it's, it's something where we may, we may not necessarily take the, the lead on, but we're able to assist other departments in, in helping complete their project. The indoor tennis facility, we've been able to, to help out some with it, as far as some construction inspection. The Stone River Greenway Phase Four, we're getting ready to, to advertise and bid for, for construction towards the end of this month. The solid waste roof replacement and the sportscom renovations, as well as the city hall renovations are just a few of the, the projects that we help out with, with Mr. Whitaker and, and some other folks that would deal with buildings on a little bit more regular basis. That's my presentation for tonight. Hopefully, I didn't go over my hour time limit that Mr. Gore had set for me. With that, I'll be, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on anything that we're working on.
Did Mr. Gore help you with that PowerPoint?
This is, this is nowhere's near to the capabilities of Mr. Gore. This is, this is a kindergarten effort to his.
No, it's very good. That's very good.
Mr. Griffith, I would make the comment, I know that y'all work on a lot of stuff, but consistently say to you personally that any time that we get a drainage issue with a resident and always hear good information and good feedback back from the residents who say that the, the engineering department was kind, they helped me and explained. So well done on the customer service piece.
That, that means a lot, Mayor McFarland. We really appreciate that. What's, that's, we're a service department, that's what we, we wanna do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you.
No change orders. All right. We'll now move to recommendations of the city manager to schedule a special meeting of the council with regards to the police headquarters project.
Mayor McFarland, members of city council, one of the largest capital projects that we will tackle will be the renovation of the former Murfreesboro Medical Clinic into the police headquarters building. The plans on that are progressing nicely, and this project actually is expected to bid this summer. But before we bid it out, I really thought it would be helpful to have Kenan Calhoun, who's the architect, come and present the plans to, to city council. I believe we're heading in a, in a great direction, but I thought it would be appropriate to, to stop and share the plans with you. So we're recommending that next Thursday, March the 12th, at 5:00 p.m. in this room, that we have a presentation from Kenan Calhoun Workshop on the police headquarters building.
Will that work with everyone's schedule?
Yeah. It's here?
Yes, sir.
We don't need a motion for that. We do need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. A motion, a second. Mr. Crumley, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lance.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to beer permits.
Mayor, tonight, we have two beer permits. The first is a special event, the Center for the Arts and their 2015 Boardwalk Bash. This will be on March the 28th. It meets all the requirements. The second is a change in ownership, Carne Incorporated doing business as MGM Market at 2415 Halls Hill Pike. It is still pending final inspection by building and codes, but has met all the other qualifications. We'd ask that you approve it, subject to final inspection of building and codes.
Do we need two motions for each item, or?
One, one motion.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lance.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Do you have a list of statements that need to be paid sitting on your desk?
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second. Motion, a second. Mr. Crumley, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lance.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have no board and commission appointments? Other business from the staff or city council? Ms. McGannon.
Mayor and council, I have put on your table, as a matter of other business, some additional revisions to Section 1009 of the employee handbook dealing with overtime, pay and comp time. We recognize that a change we had intended to make, we had not, or policy we had intended to reflect, we had not included specifically reflecting the fact that the city can choose to pay overtime to employees, even though they have elected comp time. That would come up in circumstances such as the police department getting a federal grant, or the expectation we'd be seeking FEMA reimbursement if we had a disaster. And the second one, simply including dispatchers in the correct category for the maximum amount of comp time that federal regulations allow to be accrued. So your staff would ask you to approve making those two changes, which are shown on the tracked version of the policy that was attached.
So moved.
Second. Motion, a second. Mr. Crumley, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lance.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor, you have one other piece of business. You should have a letter at your desk from Community Development Director John Callow. Operating on the federal fiscal year, the Tennessee Housing Development Authority has indicated to the city that its award for the emergency services grant for this coming year is $224,238. That's a $45,000 increase over the prior year. The city still must make formal application for this money, and Mr. Callow is seeking your approval for him to make that application. There is a table with the proposed allotments to the various agencies in the community on page two of John's letter.
Move, move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Mr. Crumley.
Councilwoman Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lance.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shacklet.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smotherman.
Aye.
Councilman Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business? Mr. Lance had one question on trash pickup, since we've, are we still on schedule, or how's that gonna go?
We are. The landfill closed early today. I think Mr. Smith doubled up his staff, but assuming the landfill's open tomorrow, we should still be on the regular schedule, unless Mr. Crumley's got information.
There's a portion of Thursday's routes that did not get collected this afternoon. The intention of solid waste is to attempt to double up tomorrow to get both Friday and the remainder of Thursday's routes.
We hope that, you know, is possible. Friday's the day where the routes are closest to the landfill, so our turnaround time is a lot quicker. So we're gonna do our dead level best to get up the rest of Thursday's route and Friday as well. But Friday, that's a good day for us to have to do extra.
Any other business? Everyone be safe going home. We'll stand adjourned.